Order. Please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Mr. McConnell.
Here.
Mr. Tannen.
Here.
Mr. Mademan.
Here.
Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Greathausen.
Here.
Mr. Baum.
Here.
Chairman Rush.
Here. This time, could I have a motion for additions?
Point of order, sir. I would like to make a motion that we make the temporary chair for the night. As much as it feigns me to do that.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Thank you.
Any opposed?
Me.
Six, one.
All right, this time we move to number three. Additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
Chairman, a move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, moving on to four, approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, moving on to number five, minutes of the previous meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we approve the minutes of the May nineteenth, twenty sixteen commission meeting, and also the standing committee meeting minutes for June second, twenty sixteen.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, moving on to number six. I see we have no proclamations. So we'll move on to seven, the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve items seven A through seventy on the consent agenda.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. All right, do we have any reports of the standing and special committees?
Excuse me, sir. Nothing. I have nothing, sir. Mr. Baum.
Yeah, actually, I'm going to take time to sit a little bit with Howard. First of all, we look like we're going through this stuff fairly quick. Our structure, we have a committee meeting where all these things get discussed and then they get passed on the full board. So if you don't see a lot of discussion, that happens. It happened in the previous meeting, so I'll start with that. Today, Howard and I got a chance to go on an investor's tour in downtown Port Huron. They took us to the Citadel Building, which is owned by the Witt family. We went to the Sperry's Building and we went to the old Michigan National Bank Building. Quite an eye-opener. You drive by, you don't really, I mean, you know something's going on, but some serious investment. I mean, that Citadel Building, they've got to be putting a couple million bucks into that thing, how old and they say all have. Wow. Unbelievable when you walk through there. The Sperry's Building, they're going to be doing the movie theaters. The same individual from Grand Rapids, Chuck Reed, that owns the Michigan National Bank Building, owns the Sperry's Building. Putting, I think that's eleven million.
Eleven million in this space.
Going into that.
How far along are they?
Ah, drywalling upstairs, upstairs further, further along. I think they're talking fall this year, but it's happening, it's for real. You know, when you drive by the outside of the building, it still looks a little ratty. They're working on the windows, which is a good thing, that they have to get the windows to meet the Michigan Historic Preservation things. They're going through a lot of that, but I can assure you, they're going full tilt, you know, inside of that place.
It is unbelievable.
Yeah, the stuff that's going to happen. And the same with the Michigan National Bank Building. I mean, they're, they're going to be starting on that before long, the demo work and stuff. So these are, I don't even know how much money's going to spend on the Michigan National Bank Building. That has to cost, but it's definitely going to be millions of dollars also. So that's some really good stuff going on. I think one of the interesting pieces of it, when we talked to Scott V. today, and they were asking why the investment and stuff, and they use the convention center as examples for kind of a precursor to a lot of these other things. I know for the Michigan National Bank Building, when we met with Chuck Reed before, that was, you know, that was good, the you-go-we-go kind of situation. So it took a little bit longer, like anything, you know, you always put timeframes on these things, but I can assure you that this stuff's happening and it's for real. So.
Well, you know, after all the complaints over the years about these projects being kind of, you know, given plans not part of it. You know, I think the community's really become concerned that it's never going to happen.
Yeah.
And here you say that you've been there, I mean, looking at the outside, doesn't really much.
Drive by and you don't want to.
But to see that millions are being spent now, that's really horrific.
Yeah, it's committed, there's no turning back on these things, it's happening. So.
Thank you. Mr. Mademan.
I'd like to just mention the Witt Building. The six units inside, but what I was most impressed with is they're putting that little theater in there. I had no idea it was going to be that large. It is going to be really, really neat. And then to go down and look at what's happening in the Sperry Building, and what was, it impressed me was how creative it is. I mean, that restaurant bar on the second floor is going to be absolutely incredible. You go down to the end, I imagine if you were to get a table down on the east end of that room, the view of downtown Port Huron is just going to be spectacular. And then from some of the hall sides, you can get a view all the way down to Black River. I was really surprised at that.
And we talked about theaters, there are twenty-seven to forty-three seats for the smaller, high-end furniture. Chuck Reed actually produces that stuff. You can have dinner, drinks, so it's not your traditional movie theater per se, but it's all first-person movies. I had not been in an Magic Theater, but this is even that much, you know, better set up.
How many theaters are there?
Eleven?
Eleven?
Eleven? Yeah. I mean, if you want to have your own private party, you can go there and, you know, it's really a unique, you know, totally different than you, I think you're used to going to the movie theater.
I've seen one in downtown Kellam Zoo, and it's really popular, one in downtown Kellam Zoo, you can actually take your dinner and drinks, sit in the seat and watch the movie. And the other thing that, and I, sure, Jeff was equally as impressed with it as I was. They're spending eleven million dollars, not debating the Sperry, and they said ninety percent of the work was being done by local contractors. That really impressed.
Watson Brothers, students and a bunch of other folks.
And we walked through and some of the workers in there recognized us, they're local people, so that was really great. And they said, now, don't be expecting to see a lot of work and things happening down at the Michigan National Bank Building for a little while. They have to do demolition down there, and they're going to make it, what's that, energy efficiency status they're getting?
Do you know?
Lead.
Leads, lead certification, is that what they call it?
Yes.
And there was some, I think it said asbestos problems in the lower part of the Michigan National Bank Building that they really would have to touch.
Title, title removal.
Title removal.
They could leave it if they wanted.
They're taking it out. They're cleaning it all up to get the certification, the highest certification for energy.
One of his hotels is in the Michigan National Bank Building, that was three years, built three years either before or after the one in downtown Port Huron. So it's very similar architectural and very similar to what he's, to him.
Yep, it was, the community is going to be really, really pleased with what's going on.
Thank you. Carl Tannen, give us a plug on the Semcog meeting.
Well, I am the county's representative to Semcog Southeastern Michigan Council of Governments, and that's the seven county region of Metro Detroit. And we represent thirteen hundred elected officials across Southeastern Michigan. We actually have half the population of the whole state of Michigan is covered in Semcog. And that organization has ten meetings a year of their executive committee. And I, as your, I serve as your representative on the executive committee. And within our county, we have a representative from the city of Fort Huron representing cities, and a representative from Fort Huron Township representing townships in Semcog. And twice a year, we have what's called a general assembly, and that's a meeting of all the elected officials in Semcog. And the program is going to be held at the New Waters Convention Center. And our retired county administrator, Bo Puckman, is going to be making a presentation on how the project was planned and executed, and some of the related successes which we've been discussing this evening. Semcog not only has this executive committee that makes legislative decisions like our board does to the county on a monthly basis, but during the general assembly, they can make overall organizational changes. And at that level, they're organized into three caucuses. There's a county caucus made up of all county elected officials. There's a township caucus that's made up of all township officials. And there's a city and village caucus made up of all those officials. And it's organized that way because there are certain issues that come about in local government that affect a form of government more than another form of government. And they're, they try to make sure that there's consensus between large counties and small counties, between cities, villages, townships, and counties. And it's a very complicated organizational structure. But they, the genesis of the organization was, goes back in the days of the sixties and seventies, when there were all sorts of federal grants across the country, and there were a huge amount of grants compared with what we're dealing with today. And the federal government required that all major federal grants had to go through a regional planning agency to make sure that all the communities that would be affected by the federal spending would be aware and fit into those decisions. Right now, two of the biggest decisions that we made were approving the widening of I-75 and I-94, which will be in place over the next ten years. So at the general assembly Thursday, in addition to the, in addition to the presentation and the caucus meetings, we're also offering a tour of the waterfront in Fort Huron, within a town development bent to it. So that we'll be taking the first hundred participants and giving them a pre-conference tour to see a lot of the development of the waterfront. Because one of Semcog's initiatives is the Blue Economy, is trying to take advantage of our rivers and lakes in terms of growing tourism and increasing performance. So all elected officials that are members of Semcog will be attending the meeting. We're expecting around two hundred, two hundred of the leaders there. Also at this meeting, they'll be electing our new chair and our vice chair.
All right, now, if you're not aware, with our master plans, the county is helping us with for Riley Township, a lot of things that Semcog does for all our communities, but specifically with Riley, a lot of demographics and the information that we get for all the master plans, Semcog does a, they do a lot of work, that's one of the things that we get a lot of information on. If you go on to your, it's not your website, but everyone, I just happened earlier today with Riley, it breaks down forty different items, but the demographics within just Riley Township, depending on your race and age, didn't realize yet, so few kids. Most of us are older individuals in Riley Township, the majority is. That's one of the things that Semcog does.
Commissioners, if you want to go to that meeting, Jenny Posey can get you registered. Four thirty is kind of the start, if I'm not mistaken, of the program.
Yes.
Conference with the talk. There are going to be a couple hundred other elected officials from our community. It's a great opportunity really to show them our community, show them the convention center, so I encourage you guys, have a good chance to go to sign up.
Jennifer Posey did ask that we do it by tomorrow. Listen.
I would like to go back to our earlier discussion because the convention center has come out. And it's kind of interesting that we're talking about the Sperry Building and what's going on in the Michigan National Bank Building, putting in the hotel there. It goes back to, I think, what, three years ago, Jeff, when we got this call that Jeff Reed was going to be in town? Did we want to meet with him? Was that November?
No, two thousand and twelve.
Been a few years. And we went down, we met with Chuck Reed, who was doing the Sperry's development. And we also at that time met with the city officials. The mayor was there, Paul Minn, the vice, the mayor pro tempore. Bruce Brown was still the city manager then, and he had brought him over. But Chuck Reed at that time told us that John Wheeler, who did the DoubleTree and worked with us on the convention center and the new restaurant, Fravors, told Chuck, you've got to go to Fort Huron, there are interesting things going on there. And Chuck Reed at that time mentioned he had never been to Fort Huron. And that was his first trip. Dropped his wife off downtown, and then he went, met with John Wheeler out at DoubleTree and the convention center and all of that. And that was three years ago, and now he's made a investment downtown Fort Huron. And the thing that John Wheeler stressed to him was the collaboration that was going on in St. Clair County between the county and the city, that everyone was working together for the betterment of the community. So it was.
Actually ironically mentioned that I got Carrie running up to my truck. I got a bunch of Cranes magazines, they just did like a seven-page insert on the Blue Water and copies for everybody. Probably have a couple extra copies if you guys looked at it, and it was a whole section on the Blue Water, St. Clair County and everything that was going on. And it's probably seven pages or so.
It's nice.
It's not very nice.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that Bill Puckman's going to be discussing in his presentation. It's not just the success of the convention center and the restaurant and the culinary school, it's that we got a new Holly, Holly and Express. We have the new other portables we're just describing.
It was the scene.
It was the scene. And now we're seeing that St. Clair and Green City are following along with similar initiatives. They're trying to renovate the St. Clair Inn, they're going to build the new, what's it called, building in on Water Street?
Yep.
In Green City.
In on Water.
And so all of these initiatives are taking place, and they're really going to put St. Clair County, the whole county, on the map.
All right, thank you. McConnell.
I would just like to bring up, I've been attending my townships and village meetings, and I went to three, and at all three meetings, the planning commissions were talking about getting no R.B. ordinance. And they want to do this on their own because the county didn't do it. I get back and I'm talking to Sheriff Donilon, and it's like, we don't want individual townships to have ordinances because how do people know where the township starts and stops, right? You're driving down a road, it's not assigned on every road. So I talked to, I've been to Lynn, Muzzy, Village Cape Town, City of Yale, Brockway, Grant, and Canokee. And they all want to see that we can do something with the, with the ordinance. They, of course, were all on board at the previous time. So that goes back to two thousand and eleven. So Sheriff Donilon and Tom Buckley, they actually, there's an ordinance that they have ready that's been through council to look at it. I would like to see us at least pursue again, send the letters out, because I believe that's what happened the last time. A letter was sent to all municipalities and to all the townships to find out if there's an interest, and then there was a public hearing.
About a fifty-fifty deal back then, sixty-four, I mean, it was not a, you know, but there again, if we pass something here, individual townships can also opt out. And the reason that Tim ever, and Bill Gray top worked on this, so he can explain it better than I can, but the reason they want that county-wide ordinance is then for those that adopt, then it's the same enforcement measures for everybody. Because right now, you've got thirty-one cities, townships, and villages, you know, and I mean, it's hard to kind of, okay, what's, and I've become Riley Township, but what's Riley Township and Muzzy, and I mean, you know, I'm just, I'm just, it's, you know, so trying to, you know.
It's pretty generic. When you read through the ordinance that was proposed, I mean, most of the stuff is state law. Right, it's not something that St. Clair picked up and said, we want to do this. This is all the stuff that deals with, I mean, the DNR's looked at it, and everybody's looked at these things, and you know.
Well, it's a copy of one that was up north, very similar to a copy from San Leal County.
Sure, San Leal and Lapeer.
Yeah, when we first addressed this, I went to every one of the township meetings, who I represent, and five of the six did not want it at that time. We definitely agreed to address it, but then once you put an ordinance in place, then you have enforcement. They can definitely opt out. Ira Township has their own, and, what's it? Right, Clay has a new one, and I've talked to Jay on this, and I think theirs is pretty useless except for the, over there. Because the way they drafted it, you can't take a vehicle anywhere, even on a busy road, because it's a speed limit. Because you're not, I'll check my memory, but over there they drafted it that you can't take a golf cart-type vehicle, ATV, on any road that exceeds twenty-five miles per hour, which every road, basically, was very strict.
But those are two separate ordinance, the golf cart ordinance is separate from the other one.
But that's part of their ordinance when I, that agreed that.
So talking to Tim, Tim's hope is that people would at least give it a chance and say, look, let's try this. If it goes, I mean, if you're into it three months and you're finding out you have major issues, you can just go ahead and opt out and say, we want to get out now. He wants to let it go for a year. According to San Leal and Lapeer County sheriffs, they have less problems dealing with it now that they've got an ordinance because they don't have the kids or whoever's driving these cutting across the field because they know they shouldn't be on the road. And that's where they were getting calls saying, I got somebody trespassing on my property. Now they can go on the shoulder of the road and drive around and get, you know, the mile around to their neighbor's house or whatever. So I would like to see us at least address it, and if we don't, then I know that they're going to take these ordinances and we're going to have them spotted around different places, and I think that's more of the best.
I'm going to defer to Bill Gray top because he's the one that worked on this quite a bit, that can be, do you want to just?
Yeah, we have, we copied two of the ones from up north like you're talking. We drew up our own, which is very similar, but each one has to be a little bit specific to your community because you may have a particular road that gets excluded, depends on safety and all kinds of things like that. So we went through, we drafted it, we went through it several times. We had two public hearings at the county on two separate nights so that everybody could come in. At the time, I would say I had maybe three people adamantly against it. I probably had a variety of people that didn't care one way or the other, and some people that truly wanted it. And rather than force the issue at the time, we decided to back up and just kind of let it sit for a while, and then figure we'd come back at another date. Now that Clay has done their own, it tells us it's time to move before everybody else starts doing theirs so that we have this uniform piece that the sheriff can enforce through the entire county. If you have a low ordinance, the sheriff's not going to enforce it.
Correct.
So you want to take it, and you want to make it county-wide.
And you're very correct in saying, right, that, I mean, we don't blanket this and say, this is what everybody's doing. We have the generics on it, and then the individual townships and municipalities, village or city get to say, we don't want to have anything that's state road and east, right?
They exclude any road they want.
You exclude parts and you exclude different roads. You can get up and down some of the main roads, as long as they're not an M-road or an I-road. You can get up and down just so you can get around the corner and go a quarter mile. So there's lots of, lots of flexibility.
Well, possibly you and Bill, if you want to draft a letter for every municipality and have Riley reconsider it and all the townships that I do, if it's still going to be five out of six that don't want it, I'm going to not support it, if I can get the majority to support it.
Mr. Baum's opt out, correct?
That's correct.
Put a county-wide.
But if Al tells me as supervisor of Riley, he does not want it, what? Thompson at Wales. If I get five supervisors telling me they don't want it, my vote's going to be no, because that's who I represent.
I've been getting a lot of calls over too on people that have said, why haven't you guys taken this thing out?
Well, I think one of the problems is when the communication comes from the county, it seems like, I think, the view of some of the townships is that we're driving this, and, you know, some of the, some of the townships that are in favor of this need to step up, in my opinion, and take some sort of leadership role so it doesn't appear that this is something that the county's trying to force down the township's throats.
Bill Dieter said last night, he called me up and he said, you know what? He said, I got to take a little control here. And Bill's in charge of, works with the MTA.
Yeah, Township Association.
Yeah. The director. So he said, I've got to get it there and have it try to trickle in. He says, if you guys come in and say that it's the thing that we need to do, he said, this needs to be township-driven. And he said, so I want to get with the townships. And he's been calling around too, and he's like, you didn't tell me over there, you didn't tell me over there. And I said, you didn't ask me. So, but he said, you know, where else have you been? And I'm like, well, I've just been in my district, I'm not going anywhere else and talking. But I just think it's happening, right? There's enough, enough people that are looking at doing their own, and they're going to do their own. If we don't, and I know that scares Tim from that aspect of having too many things.
I think that's a big item, is commonality, so there's.
Equal enforcement.
Equal enforcement.
Well, one definite positive for this, if it's a county-wide ordinance and the township supports it, then you're not the enforcing agent, it comes to the county to be enforcing the agent. So you don't have to have an ordinance officer and have the expenses to enforce this ordinance. You have an issue, you call the sheriff up and they can track it. So there's, it's got a lot of positives, some negatives on it, as I addressed before. But if we're going to have an ordinance, I definitely think that county-wide one we've done it better than an individual one. Because as soon as you have an ordinance like Ira or Clay does, the expense falls in their lap.
So to reiterate what Greg just said, and that's the idea of opting out, if you can stay in it for one year, I think you're going to find that you would probably stay in it and not opt out because it's not going to change anything. And if it changes anything, it will probably be for the better. I know there's one person out there, and I think we all know one dog about him, that's adamantly opposed to it, and wants to opt out on day one if they do it. But I think we convince him to stay in for a period of time and see what it really does.
If that's all, they wouldn't be able to opt out at all. They'd have to be in for a.
No, no, no. I'm just. We would hope they would. We want everybody to give it a chance.
Yeah, give it a chance.
Instead of just saying no.
Well, you take Fort Grasshaw Township that I represent, I mean, it's really, the density there.
You're going to have a very limited space in your township that's even going to be involved.
So they are, they're very concerned about opening up a really urban, it's an urban township.
I believe what will happen in Fort Grasshaw, because they already have substantial contrast with the sheriff. The sheriff's already there, they're out there, you know, twenty-four seven, I believe, pretty much at Fort Grasshaw. So they already have a vehicle in the area.
Just go bring Tim back in, we'll rekindle the discussion, get the discussion started again. Bill Gray top, I'm going to put you in charge of that again, so.
Let's have Mr. McConnell. Greg will do it, I'll help him.
Okay.
Your committee. If that sounds good.
Anything else?
Beautiful. Thank you.
Dave, this time I have nothing, so you could. This time I'd like to, I have Al Tyus as supervisor. I really appreciate you doing this. Trying to go out through thirty-one communities, the four meetings during the year, and I'd be happy to allow us to come out here, so thank you very much.
Good to have you.
Could you please introduce yourself and the other officers here?
I'm Al Tyus as supervisor, this is Dawn Solicki.
Hi there.
She's our treasurer, and I don't know if I know anybody else here tonight, I don't think so.
You appreciate it. Thank you.
One of the things I'd like to say too, we opened up our meetings, our landfill, the host meeting, Riley Township came out, Phil Ford, she brought a busload of people out. And I thought the meeting was awesome, right? I wish other townships would take us up on it, to be quite honest.
Yeah.
So far, and I don't think they realize, you know, when you get out there and see it, and, you know, some of the people have been in for or against, but question answered, I thought the meeting was fantastic. I hope your residents found it.
Yeah, the residents love it.
Found it. Yeah, I guess probably thirty guys out there.
Yeah, they're still talking about it.
Yeah, so I mean, I would encourage you, I'd encourage.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, I would encourage you, I would encourage.
On that note, I believe Columbus Township is entering into an agreement. I don't know if you went forward with Matt Williams as far as Riley Township at the landfill.
No.
And it's going to reduce your costs substantially, so if you want to pursue that, Columbus is going through it, but now Capitol started it. And you'll probably see ten to fifteen percent savings in the cost to your current tenant.
We'll have to get back, really, one of our stumbling blocks in that was the special assessment here. Now, even though there was a saving, but the time you triple that back to the residents, there's a long pay for it.
Columbus has the same thing, and you can have it here, and you can draft that special assessment to address any, uh, financial concerns.
Well, we're talking about it again, Matt.
Great. All right, uh, at this time, do we have any citizens wishing to address the board? Any citizens wishing to address the board? All right, seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business. We have none, we'll move on to new business. On, uh, eleven A, approval of the county disbursements next May of two thousand sixteen.
Going to make the motion to approve the county disbursements for, um, the two thousand sixteen, the amount of ten million nine hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Graytop?
Yes.
Mr. McConnell?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Mr. Tamiyan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yep.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. Motion passed. Move on to eleven B, Board of Health Appointment, District One.
I would make a moish, a motion to appoint Arnold Coontz, representing District One, to the Health Advisory Board for the remainder of a two-year term, expiring twelve through the month sixteen.
Board? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eleven C.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the equipment lease agreement with applied imaging for the library in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollars and forty-six cents, for a term of thirty-nine months.
Support. Any discussion? I don't know if Allison wants to address it all, but, uh, I'd like to talk to Perry on this, and, um.
Only if there are questions or concerns. I know that probably not, but, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you need a roll call, please, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Chairman Rushing?
Yes. Motion passed. Move on to eleven D, and this would be the maintenance agreement for the applied imaging.
Chairman, at this time I move to approve the maintenance agreement with applied imaging for the library for a thirty-nine month term in the amount not to exceed fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Who's second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tamiyan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes.
Chairman Rushing?
Yes. Moving on to eleven E, the two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty-one Cooperative Reimbursement Program application for prosecuting attorney.
Sir Chairman Rushing, I would move to approve the two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty-one Cooperative Reimbursement Program application in the amount of one million five hundred and fourteen thousand seventy-seven dollars.
Support. Any discussion? And I believe we need a roll call on this.
Mr. Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Chairman Rushing?
Yes. Moving on to eleven F, the two thousand.
Mr. Emperor Rushing, I would like to approve the application for the front of the court for Cooperative, Cooperative Reimbursement Program two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-one in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred sixty-four dollars and, uh, thirty-four cents.
Have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes. All right, moving on to eleven G, fiscal year of two thousand sixteen, Edward Bang Memorial Justice Report.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would move the approval of the two thousand sixteen Edward Barney Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Application in amount of twelve thousand three hundred and two dollars.
Have a second? Any discussion? Do we need a roll call on this?
No, that's for the grant, right? That's not a match month.
Correct. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eleven H, fiscal year two thousand sixteen, Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, at this time I move to approve the two thousand sixteen Marine Safety Program Grant Agreement in the amount of one hundred thirty-three thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eleven I, fiscal year two thousand seventeen, Community Corrections Plan.
Mr. Honorable Acting Chairman, I move that we approve the twenty seventeen Community Corrections Plan application in the amount of three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, moving on to eleven J, the Columbus Lodge Generator Hookup.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the contract with BNT Electric in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and sixty dollars for the installation of the generator hookup at the Columbus County Park Lodge.
Have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner Graytop?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Tamiyan?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hydeman?
Yes.
Chairman Rushing?
Yes. All right, moving on to eleven K, St. Clair County Master Plan Update, Authorization, Authorization to Distribute Draft Plan.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would move to authorize the distribution of the draft St. Clair County Master Plan.
Have a second?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eleven L, Retirement Board Appointment.
Uh, I would make the motion to appoint Kerry Hefting to the Retirement Board as the DOC representative for the remainder of a one-year term, expiring twelve through the month sixteen.
Support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to eleven M, Building Authority Reappointments.
Our majestic temporary chairman, I move to appoint Danielle Hazelwood and reappoint Dina Alderdyce and Kerry Hefting to the Building Authority of St. Clair County each for the remainder of a three-year term, expiring December three first, twenty sixteen.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Get this time, uh, moving on to the Administrator's Report.
Um, just a couple of things this evening. Yesterday, our new HR director started, so next time you're in the building, take a chance to go over to HR and introduce yourself. Her name is Diane Barber. She comes to us with a lot of HR experience in a variety of different areas, and I think she's going to take her assets in the county. Looking forward to her new ideas. Um, our audit is complete. We're about two, three weeks ahead of schedule. I should have statements early next week available for anyone that wants them, and then they'll be available on our website as well. Our Library Director, Alison Arnold, is going to be interviewed by C-SPAN on Monday, and they are going to feature our county library system. And that will air, um, sometime on August sixth or seventh for book TV.
Kerry or Alison, will you keep us up to speed on everything that happens there, send out some notices and let us know? And when it gets ready, give us the definite date and we'll.
Yeah. It's a, it's a part of their two thousand sixteen city tour, and they chose Port Huron, so they've also communicated with the local museum and the community foundation. But, uh, this morning, communication came through that they'd like to, uh, feature the St. Clair County Library System, so, very excited about it.
Just tell them how smart the chairman is.
The honorable current chairman.
Is that a temporary chair or a regular? Would you show County Commissioner's List on the library board?
There is no county commissioner on the library board, but the liaison is here. If you'd like to come, one o'clock, they're filming.
Very much. That's cool.
Uh, one last thing, SMG's offices should be complete this week. The furniture is scheduled to be installed next week, so we hope that we will be moved in by the end of next week.
All right. Uh, now, what I would like to do is Kerry Hefting has taken over. This is our first board, full board meeting, as our new county administrator taking over, Bill Copeland. I want to make that note also, now. You need another surprise? Appreciate it. All right, can I have a motion to accept the Administrator's Report?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passed. Do we have any miscellaneous business?
I, I forgot, Clemis went live today.
Great.
And, and went off without a hitch, so.
Well, you explain that a little bit, what it is. I know Bill Graytop is very.
Bill's, how long were you working on this, Bill? How long has Clemis been in the process?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years? Clemis is a program that the, the police, everybody can use, I guess, but the police department's going to have motions out of it where they can, um, get up-to-date information on everything that's going on. I, I mean, I don't know how, that's, it's an, it's an information system.
Yeah, it is. It's a, it's a, it's a software base. It's an informational system, records management system. Uh, you can, uh, use it for, um, central dispatch, which is a piece that just went live with us. Uh, the neat part about this Clemis system is, in southeastern Michigan, there are about a hundred different agencies that are currently using Clemis, which is based in Open County. They developed it, and, and now that we are a member, we are a part member. It's like a condominium thing. You own a part of that system. So, all the money that we put into it goes to develop it and comes right back to us, so it's a great way to do business. Um, if, uh, for example, uh, you get a description of a, of a, of a guy with a gold name tag on and a kind of striped shirt on, and he sits over his arms, holding, he's got a gold watch, and he sticks up a local store down here, and he does that two or three times, and maybe he does it over in Belleville, Michigan, and then he does it over here, and he does it over here. Clemis picks up on that information, and, and all of a sudden, he comes into Port Huron, or he comes into Riley Township, and he does the same type of thing. Boom, you've got it right there. Those are things that are just, uh, you can't buy that sort of information, and it's only available if you're in the Clemis system. So, um, I think now Port Huron is on it. All of the entities that are law enforcement agencies in St. Clair County are on it, except for Clay Township, who has their own dispatch system. But everybody else is on Clemis now, and the system is going to, it'll take, there'll be a little, a couple of bugs here and there. It's going to come together to where it's going to flow seamlessly, and it's going to be better for everybody.
Not only on a public safety issue, correct me if I'm wrong, but in addition, it's going to help the officers, and I'll use the sheriff department, because that's the easiest one. When they're out on the field, it'll greatly save time savings for the information they have to do, getting the leads and everything, rather than wait for, uh, the information to go through central dispatch and all. It's going to greatly assist and be a cost savings to the county, because it will give them the information.
All of their, all of their records are right in the computer in the car. They don't have to go in to the station to do reports or anything like that anymore. It, it's interesting, um, when the camera's turned off, I'll tell you short story if you want to hear it, about, uh, an experience I had with Clemis one night, but I can't do it on the camera. But it was, um, um, it, it, it does a lot of, a lot of good stuff, so. The, you, you, you were, you were found not guilty then.
Yes.
I wasn't even part of the whole thing on account of Clemis, and I'll have to explain that in detail a little later on.
Right, Mr. Graytop.
What was the reason that, uh, it took so long to go into effect?
It was a combination of all kinds of things. First off, we did not have, um, fiber optic system that went all the way over to Open County. So, La Mirada was putting their system in, and then we had to go to AT&T and pick up that, that, uh, it's a, there's another term for it. I don't know if anybody can help me out with this term. I can't remember it now, but there's a, there's another type of a cable or line that they could hook up. No, it wasn't T-one, there's a, there's a completely different name to it. Well, anyway, we had to pay for that system to get in, and once that was hooked up, and that went to La Mirada, and they finished their system, and they shot over that way, we kind of piggybacked through their system that way. But, um, we were the largest entity that they had picked up over all of the time that they had been working on this Clemis system, and to make everything work with the dispatch, with the record keeping, with everything, so that Port Huron, and St. Clair, and everybody else that was on this system could all work seamlessly. It just took forever. And then our IT department, because we have firewalls and we have trap doors and all kinds of things that we need to keep an eye on. Isn't that a term, trap door?
It is a few names.
It sounds good. And. It does, yeah. And, um, they had to make sure that everything that they put in place would allow this information to flow freely in both directions.
Who is the administrator at that?
Single administrator?
I mean, who is the head of? Yeah, there, there, there's one guy. I'll, I'll get his name for you.
I was just curious.
Where are you talking? You mean from the cal, from our calendar?
No, I, I mean, the whole, it's, it's.
It's owned by multiple agencies. Okay. And we went to look at different software, but talking to software programs, like, you know, million dollar kind of stuff. Correct. And some of these are crazy. Clemis is a collective, you know, through a whole bunch of people who share proportions much less money than all the other alternatives. And for superior product.
So, we pay an annual fee to Open County then?
Is that? Clemis board, not Open County, Clemis board. And that money, that money goes back in to redevelop software, and so everything that you pay, it comes back to you by developing your system. It's not like tomorrow, we have to go down the road, and we see this all the time with our stuff. We are constantly buying and upgrading our software. Okay, it's four years old, we need to upgrade it. We're constantly upgrading, uh, the Clemis system, and we are a member of it. And we have, I don't know how many seats we have on the board. There are one or two seats that we will have on the board, so we have a saying that happens there.
Now, those five rockets, part, part of those run along railroad tracks there?
No, no, they're not allowed to run along railroad tracks, because the, the rail, the old metal in the rail interferes with that rock.
I think you're mistaken.
You could cross over them, but you can't one.
Mr. Chair.
We actually agreed mildly, not as honorable, but go ahead.
I, I would just like to say, when we discussed, uh, going to Clemis system, uh, I think every law enforcement, uh, agency in the county was very supportive, but with perhaps the exception of Clay Township. And so, you know, it was a pretty easy decision for us to make. Uh, our sheriff wanted it, uh, our city, uh, chief wanted it, Marysville wanted it, on down the line, so.
And it's going to greatly assess public safety. It's going to be a great tool.
It also offers a cafeteria-style piece to it, in that you can opt for additional pieces if you want to. For example, a fingerprint scanner, a mobile fingerprint scanner. Um, you get stopped on the side of the road, they'll come over with the fingerprint scanner, take your fingerprint, shoots it in, shoots it back, tells exactly who you are, and can look at your record based on what they see or what you saw. You pay a little extra for it, but it's an option that's available.
That's how I'm going to.
We'll hear about that later.
So, they were able to identify you. On the roadside. All right, do we have any other miscellaneous business?
Uh, just going to talk about one thing quickly, I was watching my report. I got an opportunity to go up to the Detroit Regional Team of Conference in American, I'm sure. There was eleven different individuals from St. Clair County that went to different, um, things. Randy Myers from Community Foundation, Myers seemed to see the V, WPHM radio station, and so. Um, we had never, uh, collectively went out there as a group for, for St. Clair County, it's Compton County, it's Open County, it's Rain County, so. I get a chance to go to, you know, a fair amount of seminars and do a lot of stuff, but I can tell you, this is the best seminar that I've ever attended as far as making connections and connecting the dots. I have some follow-up meetings, and Mark Hackel's going to be out actually Monday the twenty-seventh for three or four issues that they're interested in, that, um, you know, affect both of us, that, that is going to be good for both parties involved. The fellow from Compton County, they're up there, they're open director. We went out there with the intent, we said, if everybody can pick up three to five connections, if you don't, if you think about that, and you have eleven different people from different disciplines, there's thirty-three of fifty-five different connections that we can bring back home per se. And as part of our Blue Meets Green, a lot of the collaborative stuff that we do, uh, these people, these are people that are part of our group, uh, ones that we're meeting on a regular basis, so and so forth, which kind of parallels into my little Cranes story here. If you look, sections nine through, uh, pages nine through seventeen. For those of you that aren't familiar with Cranes, Cranes is the magazine that is read by the business community in much of Detroit, or probably not that. We had nine great stories, you know, articles, also, we've been working, um, with Cranes and the editor, Mary Crane, for some time. Actually, Rain Fernandez made an initial connection with them, and so it's all this, you know, we have a lot of great things out there, but we can tell our stories to ourselves, but if we don't tell our story on a much larger platform, a lot of these things aren't going to happen. And, you know, I think we, today, with a lot of Blue Meets. And, you know, I think we, today, with a lot of Blue Meets Green, a lot of the different things that have happened, we have a great story to tell. Um, and just the amount of people that we met, we had a little meeting yesterday, which we got together and talked about all our contacts and who we made in, or who we're in those types of things, and it was, it was the best, uh, best thing that I've ever been to by now.
Thank you.
I'd just like to follow up on what, uh, Chair Bowman has indicated. For those, uh, people that would like to go to, uh, internet TV, EBW dot TV, uh, they can see Chairman Bowman and, uh, Executive Mark Hackel from, uh, Macomb County, uh, discussing many of the things that you're talking about, and it would be well worth your time if, uh, you get on.
EBW PHM, thirteen A, you can go to the podcasts, uh, they had the governor on there, they had Peter's on, or the mechanical, or the Candace Miller, they had State. I mean, there was a whole slew of people that they had on there, and a lot of them, uh, talked about St. Clair County and a lot of the different things. You'd be surprised at how, how many of those different elected officials, um, um, identified with our region in some capacity and understand it. So it's really, it's just another one of those things that, you know, people say, why would you go, or something like that. I can tell you, being in my position, we probably shouldn't, well, we probably shouldn't have been going ten years ago because we, quite honestly, honestly, we didn't have our act together at the time. But now collectively, with all the collaboration with all the other partners.
Just tried to get your act together about six years ago, didn't you? Greatop and Nick.
Anything happen to Riley Township?
Who was first? And Al Titus and Don, one of the pastors, they had a, in my opinion, a fantastic board for, and, uh, I think, uh, they were on the first.